September workshop session for Tuesday, September ninth at 5:00 P. M. The board members have a agenda in front of them. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So moved by Mr. Grimes, taken by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Motion passes. Welcome, everyone. If you are able, please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Play ball, huh? All right. Got a couple of items of presentation and discussions. The first up on our item today is the 2025 E O C E O G report with Dr. Amy Bartlett and her team.
I saw a teaser video go out about this, so there's it's actually been.
We have a video?
There's there's. Not yet. We've got to have the presentation first, but we will have a video. Jumping ahead.
Teaser that wanted to say there's gonna be a video.
Okay, we're very excited. Actually, I'm Amy Bartlett, teaching and learning, along with my colleague, Tim Keizer, who is our accountability coordinator, and we are very excited to be here tonight to share an update on our student assessment related to the Georgia milestones. And this evening, our presentation aligns to two of our governance goals, starting with the learner experience and our focus on increasing student growth and achievement, and also with staff recruitment and development, which is governance goal number three. So this evening, we're here to share with you the results of the 2025 Georgia Milestones Comprehensive Assessment Program. Just to recap, these assessments are in two different categories. We refer to them as E O Gs or end of grade tests. Those happen in elementary and middle school and end of course tests, which happen at the high school level. At the elementary, middle school, all students take exams in English, Language Arts, and Mathematics in grades three through eight. Science is assessed in grades five and eight, and in eighth grade, they are assessed in Social Studies and High School Physical Science. On the high school end of things, we have four end of course tests in four different content areas. Algebra is our math assessment with concepts and connections. In E L A, we have American Literature, which will be moving to be called Literature and Composition Two in the spring of 2026. In the area of science, we test in Biology, and lastly, in Social Studies, we test U. S. History. So for all of these exams, our students are assessed and scored and land in one of four achievement levels. These levels begin, I'll start from the bottom up. A level one learner is at the beginning learner level where they're not yet demonstrating proficiency. Students that score at the developing learner level, level two, have partial proficiency in the knowledge and skills of the standards. Level three represents proficient learners, and they are proficient in the standards needed to pass that grade level or course of learning. And finally, level four are our distinguished learners who are demonstrating advanced proficiency in the knowledge and skills of the standards. So as we move into this evening, we want to highlight for you before we delve into the data some, a summary of our district performance. Forsyth County Schools achieved the highest scores in the state among large systems for every math, E O G, elementary and middle school grade level, as well as seventh grade, E L A, algebra, American Literature, and Biology. It's important to note, we also had multiple schools placing within the top 20 in Georgia and the entire state for both E O Cs and E O G assessments. And what's even more important is the notion that we use the data to drive our action steps for continuous improvement. So we're going to encompass that in our presentation this evening, not just a summary of the data, but as a result of this data, what action steps are we taking moving forward to continue to improve?
Okay, and there's a note at the bottom of this slide where we mention two things in here. When we say large systems, for that comparison, we look at systems who are testing 1,000 students or more. It's the same metric we've used for at least 10 years. So it's very consistent with what we consider to be large systems. The other note here is to mean scale scores. So there are two different ways when we when we're looking at system rankings, there's two different metrics that we use. The majority of what you'll see in this presentation is based on proficiency levels. So as was just mentioned on the previous slide, it's those students who are proficient and above, so the combination of the proficient and distinguished levels. The other way is mean scale scores. So the mean scale scores is a more accurate number as far as the ranking, because what it's doing, you could have example would be you might have two systems who have the exact same percentage of students proficient above, but the mean scale score is the average score of the students who took the test. And so when that number is higher, then that's demonstrating greater instructional effectiveness for that subject area or course. So just to provide some context, within these charts, we compared Forsyth County Schools with eight large systems, right? So those would be more than 1,000 students tested. We started off by looking at nearby systems. So we've got five systems here that are close to us that tested 1,000 students or more. They're on all of the slides. And then any large system in the state that outperformed Forsyth County Schools, then we move them into the comparison as well. And then we also have the state as a benchmark. Sure.
It's not just 1,000 students, it's 1,000 students took that one specific test.
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, when we, and just just for your awareness, if you take 1,000 students tested on any specific test or grade level, that roughly translates to a system that is 14,000 students or more. Okay, so we're going to begin by looking at reading performance. So this is just one aspect, it's one element that's pulled out of the English Language Arts Test, but for milestones purposes and for C C R P I purposes, it's an important metric. So we're going to start by looking at just reading. So each one of these slides, so we've got it by grade level here, each one of these slides is going going to show the percentage of students reading at grade level or above. And then I want to point out that in all of these, on the right side, we have cards that demonstrate additional, express additional information. So you can see the Forsyth County percentage of students, in this case, reading proficient or above. How many points is that above the state average? And then where does that place Forsyth County Schools looking at this group of large systems? So this is our third grade reading status. Fourth grade.
We always going to be in gold?
We're always in gold. Yes, thank you. Fifth grade. Sixth grade. Seventh grade. Eighth grade. And then moving to the high school level, it's American Literature. So these these are 11th grade students, and if you'll keep that in mind for a future slide when we look at Social Studies, this for our, every 11th grader in the system takes the American Literature test, and you can see here that we were at the highest proficiency rate in the state for large systems with 87.2% of our students in this case, reading level.
Something you said there is keep that in mind, that every 11th grader takes that.
Get to the to the Social Studies, that may not be the case.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, and this slide demonstrates reading proficiency over time. So we wanted to include some longitudinal data in here. So this is post pandemic, so 2022 through 2025. You can think about these as cohorts, if you'd like to do that, if you were to look at the prior year and say, well, those third graders and then the fourth grader in the next year. The one caveat there is that when we get to the the percentage levels or when we're talking about a subject area and we talk about proficiency levels, it is a different grade level expectation for those students. So now moving into English Language Arts. So this includes, this test is, and these results include reading, but it also includes vocabulary and writing. So each one of these slides is going to show third grade proficiency level, so proficient and higher for each grade level. And I want to point out that on the right side, these cards are still the same, except we add one when we also have the highest mean scale score. Because remember, I mentioned there's those two metrics, proficiency level, but also mean scale score, that more precise one. So we only added mean scale score when Forsyth had the highest in the in the state for large systems. Fourth grade. Fifth grade. Now here's sixth grade. And so this is the first slide that has the highest mean scale score. And you notice that's in addition to being first overall when you measure it by proficient and above. Seventh grade. And I'll point out the difference here. So if you're looking at the bars that represent the proficiency level, you'll see we're slightly below Fayette County in this instance. But when you look at the mean scale score over on the right side, within those proficiency levels, we had the highest mean scale score. And eighth grade, E L A. And then American Literature. Once again, first overall and highest mean scale score. And this is these, as I mentioned, and we're looking at reading, these are those 11th grade students. English Language Arts, performance over time.
So one of the most important things we do is utilize the data and determine what our next action steps are. I can confidently say that this is an opportunity for us for growth in our district. While we have good things happening, I can confidently say after examination, all of our schools have included reading, E L A, and literacy as part of their continuous improvement efforts through their school improvement planning. So specifically, what are we doing to address the need to emphasize and spotlight literacy? Well, it's interesting to note that the state has new E L A standards across all grade levels, and this is the first year of implementation. So with that in mind, we are implementing evidence-based practices and resources aligned with the science of reading. That comes because research tells us we need to align our practices to that, but additionally, we have state legislation that is really mandated in alignment to the science of reading. So we've broken that down with you to see within each grade band, what does that look like? We are creating core supplemental resources that are aligned to those new standards. They're quite different than our previous E L A standards, and they are really prompting us to go back and look at the resources we're using in classrooms with our students. In the elementary space, K through five, we are updating additional resources for what we call our literacy lifelines. These are resources that all of our teachers use to teach small group strategy instruction, where students, we know exactly where their reading levels are, and we provide at point of need for those students through small strategy groups. So we have done a concerted effort to have a robust resource development for those teachers to use in that process. Additionally, at the fourth and fifth grade level, we are and have been building our own core resources and units of instruction for fourth and fifth grade. I could go back and show you, but notably, I'm very proud to say our fourth and fifth grade data, both out of reading and E L A, were our strongest. And that is where we've invested the time and resources to align our instruction with the science of reading and knowing how to bundle those pieces together. So I feel like we have some really good things in place, and we're just expanding that in a more robust way for this this school year. At the secondary level in grades six through 12, we have new course curriculum maps that are aligned, again, to those new English Language Arts standards. And most importantly, we have designed really intentional, grade-banded professional learning modules to support our teachers in the implementation of understanding the level of these new standards, how to utilize the resources, and how to target those in classrooms. So again, every school improvement plan has very specific action cycles in place toward the efforts and measurable outcomes for literacy. I also want to just emphasize and thank the board for your support. We've expanded our universal screening all the way through eighth grade this year, because what we're showing you today is year-end data, but we want data to monitor progress along the way, and we're utilizing iReady to get more data in regularly so we can monitor progress and proficiency of our students.
Okay, moving on to math. Excuse me.
Safe to say that the new E L A standards, whatever we see this year is going to be the new baseline?
Yes.
It'd be hard to compare what we've got this year, at the end of this year, with last year, correct?
They are new standards. We will report, I'll let Tim speak to this, but but we'll report just in the area of content mastery and not growth, if you want to address that a little bit.
Think that's important to remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, so anytime we have the, anytime we have new standards rolled out, a new test that's rolled out, there are certain elements of it that can be compared from one year to the next. Typically proficiency rates was, you know, the percentage of students who are proficient on the test. The state tries their best to have a system in place to equate it to the prior year, but it can't be one-to-one comparison. And the farther we get from, like we mentioned earlier, you know, there was a bullet point that mentioned pre-pandemic. The farther we get from that point, the more differences there are between those tests and courses back then. And I'll speak to them coming, moving forward here, High School Physical Science and U. S. History. It's completely different total groups of students who are taking those tests. So it's, it can be difficult to make a year-over-year comparison when the test itself is different. Okay, with third grade math. So you'll notice on this one, you can see Forsyth is at the highest percentage of students proficient and above on the chart, but then also the highest mean scale score. It was already mentioned that for every grade level, we had the highest mean scale score for math, so I won't repeat that on every slide. It's our fourth grade. Fifth grade math. Sixth grade. Seventh grade. Eighth grade. Here's another example where we're slightly in second place here on the proficient and above, but then back on the right side of the screen, you'll see the highest mean scale score for this subject area. And then algebra concepts and connections, the same is true at the high school level.
If the student takes algebra, do they still take the eighth grade math test?
Yes, sir.
And the grade test, so so those students would be counted.
They did, the algebra course are also in the.
That's correct. Well, most of them. So this, when we're looking at this slide for eighth grade, every eighth grader who took algebra is included in this data because they have to take both tests. When we're looking at algebra, this also includes any high school students who took the algebra test. So all eighth graders who took algebra, in addition to any high school students.
Thank you.
Sure. Here's our math performance over time.
I think with the third grade post COVID, this is the first one that's gone through without any impact from COVID, right? Because they started after COVID, third grade? Yeah, counting back to. They should have. Would that be fourth grade?
He'd have to go in another direction of things.
Yeah.
A third grader, a third grader took this in 2022.
Oh, this is 22.
Is the earliest one. So that third grader would have been impacted by COVID in kindergarten and first grade. And everybody else after that would have been impacted by COVID.
Gotcha.
I really would like to highlight, I'm sure you've seen by the data, we're doing very well in mathematics. Last year, when we stood here at this time, we were first in the state across the board, high mean scale scores. And you think, gosh, how can we get higher? But this year, I'm very, it's just so pleased with the efforts that we still are. We're not complacent. We're not just, you know, sitting resting on our laurels. We've continued to push forward, and this year's math data shows those increases. So I want to highlight the action steps that our teams and our schools are taking. We continually are using data to inform our curriculum and instructional refinement, constantly looking at formative and summative data, and we get those pieces from iReady, again mentioned, Big 20, Derivida, these scores. We're analyzing course enrollment and success rates. There are a lot of different pathways that our students take in the high school level, and we've done a great job with the analysis of what it takes to be successful in those pathways. There are job-alike cohorts that come together for courses across all schools, so there's a consistent expectation of the rigor of those courses in every one of our schools, and to minimize gaps vertically as our students progress. Additionally, through the standards, those new math standards have only been in play for two years. We really have pulled out some key look fours, and we're doing classroom walkthroughs with our administrative teams, teacher teams, our content specialists, again, to ensure that consistency across all math classrooms in our district. One of the areas we saw as an opportunity for growth as we really poured through our data last year is we noticed that one of our subgroups, our gifted students and our high-level learners, weren't necessarily scoring at that highest level of distinguished as we thought they were capable of. So as a result, this year, we're expanding access to rigorous math instruction across all of our elementary schools. We have implemented Beast Academy. We had a pilot, and now that option is there for all of our elementary schools. Again, in several of our continuous improvement plans, school improvement plans, we have several schools that have identified, how do we take our students that have those capabilities and really push them into those rigorous classrooms, rather than just advancing them, but just enriching the curriculum at their grade level? So just know those are some intentional efforts that we have going on right now in mathematics.
Okay, moving on to science. So at the elementary level, science is only tested at fifth grade. So this is, this shows our fifth grade science performance. High School Physical Science, this is really a grade eight slide, even though it's the High School Physical Science course. It's one of those changes I was mentioning that where I said things are different. So the High School Physical Science end-of-course test was removed a few years ago. So now this is only tested for the subject area if it's taken during the middle school years. So this slide only includes eighth grade students for us, or really for all systems. But the reason, the note on the right, what that speaks to, the reason it's difficult to make comparisons between any of these systems when it comes to this course, is different systems have a different policy on or different practice on who takes this course in middle school. And Forsyth County Schools, all of our students take the High School Physical Science course as eighth graders. It's a very small, 27 students who took the regular eighth grade or eighth grade science course last year. So we say all students. And the reason for that, the reason we put that in place several years ago is to give those eighth grade students a chance to earn a high school science credit in middle school. And so that is still our practice. Other systems have either the same as us, or they have something in between, or something completely different. Because if students were to take this course in high school, then they don't take the test at all, and their data won't be represented on this chart. Many systems choose their highest performers to take this course as eighth graders, and so that data, their results would be higher on the test naturally. On the note on the right side explains that 11% of the students in the state who took the High School Physical Science E O G this test were Forsyth County students. So it's disproportionate compared to the other E O Gs where we represent about 3% of the students.
So in essence, all of our eighth graders, and only the.
Identified top-tier, basically advanced students in the other systems would take it as eighth graders?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And here are our biology results. So once again, we have the highest proficiency rate, and we have the highest mean scale score in this test. And here's our district science performance over time. So even when we, when we were looking at that comparison only between other systems for 2025, speaking to physical science, one nice thing about this view is you can see that increase from last year to this year in our physical science performance.
I can just come back to that slide, Tim. I think that's really important to highlight, that in every grade band, we did increase that percentage of students that were either proficient or distinguished, and we attribute that to these very specific action steps we are taking in science. We are very committed to making sure our students do science in Forsyth County Schools. That's in every grade level, starting in kindergarten, which, by the way, I'm excited to share, we've adopted a new science program, Ph. D. Science, this year in all K through five classrooms, and that was teacher-driven about wanting students to experience the doing of science. That's the case all the way up through our middle schools, our high schools. We are big believers in inquiry-based science, interactive learning experience. We have designed common lab experiences. Again, that equity and consistency across every classroom in our county, and we're promoting scientific thinking through reading and writing. So I just have loved to see, our social media is just full of pictures from all of our schools with learning that's happened in this first month of school, and I guarantee you, you see these kind of pictures that are on this slide of what's happening in our classrooms and with our instruction with science. Our students are doing science, and we're seeing those results in our data. Our data is heading in the right way, in the right direction.
Okay, moving to Social Studies. So Social Studies is only tested at state level in eighth grade and in high school. So this chart represents our Georgia Studies students. And this slide shows U. S. History. So U. S. History is an 11th grade course. So when you think back to what I was mentioning earlier, looking at that high proficiency rate with our American Literature students, these are the same students, the 11th graders. The difference is, and that's the local context written over on the right side, is that the Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate, and Dual Enrollment Students who take U. S. History, they take that version of the course, they're exempt from taking the E O C. And in Forsyth County Schools, that's 40% of our students who are taking those advanced versions of this course. So their data is not included. When you look at other systems, and it's, you can view this by looking at how many students took American Literature as 11th graders in that system versus how many students took U. S. History. That shows the percentage of students. And so we have a very high percentage of students in Forsyth County Schools. So I would say for any system on the screen, you can't make a direct comparison when you're looking at U. S. History performance. I will say that when when we get to C C R P I and we look at U. S. History, we receive beyond the maximum points for U. S. History and C C R P I with the same data. Because what they do, the state takes the grade in the A. P. course for us or the dual enrollment version of the course, and they convert that to a proficiency level. When that happens, we exceed 100% in U. S. History. And here's our Social Studies performance over time. And so I'd like to point out on the right side where it shows U. S. History, you know, initially, when I look at that, I think about it as a drop, but that drop can always be represented as we increase the students who are identified as taking those advanced versions of the course.
Great, thanks, Tim. So again, with our action steps, first and foremost, we have so many of our classrooms in Social Studies focused on student engagement. Again, that is a common thread through our school improvement plans that we're seeing professional learning on that inquiry-based instruction and creating student engagement in classrooms. Also, an alignment of classroom formative and summative assessments to the rigor of the standards. And you'll see here again, that literacy woven through with rigorous writing practices on the assessments. Specifically, we've conducted training in our really leading professional learning for our teachers with what we refer to as document-based questions or D. B. Qs and free response questions to strengthen that literacy in Social Studies through targeted training, resources, and modeling for our teachers and students. Sorry. So those are the four content areas that the E O G, our milestones, our E O Cs, give us a lens into. What's most important, as we said, are the action steps that we get from this data. We have some affirmation of areas that, you know, we're hitting great marks with and strides, but even more importantly, opportunities for continued growth. And that's where our school improvement plans come in. You can see here, our schools are continually analyzing data and adjusting their action steps to guide their work. On the right-hand side, it's just a sample of our continuous improvement process. We're identifying needs, we're doing the data analysis, we're drilling into root causes, and that's what's led to the schools, their current school improvement goals. You see there, they have to identify desired outcomes and design action cycles to get there, and they're already in the process of that for this first semester. The underlying element there is professional learning, where we come in in a very targeted way to see what learning is needed to create that human change for better experiences in these areas. And then we will continue to measure that growth. Our goals are written in a very measurable way so that we can come back in and monitor and evaluate, and then readjust, and then start again. So it is a continuous improvement process where we will go through multiple action cycles this year. But this data you see today really did help inform their first action cycle for the year, and they'll set a second action cycle in place for second semester. The key here is intentionality, coherence, and a continued desire to be better for all students to be successful. And that's how we view data as an opportunity to drive us forward.
Okay, we want to reference that we'll do a presentation here in the late fall about our college and career ready. our college and career-ready performance index, the C C R P I. These first three components, content mastery, which is achievement, progress, which is growth, and closing gaps, which is the achievement gap within the subgroups, those are all driven by the Georgia Milestones data that we just reviewed. And then it also impacts the readiness component as well. But this will be, this data is, even though it's informed by everything that we just looked at, at least those initial components, the state takes them a little more time to put that together. But it will present this data in a little bit different way. It lets you see, you know, flags and other things related to subgroup performance. So we just wanted to give you a little bit of a notification that that perform, or that presentation will be coming.
Okay, so with that said, very comprehensive, tried to drill it down into 20 minutes. I probably missed by a little bit, but we just wanted to see if you have any additional questions, points of clarity that we can address for you.
Um, I, can you hear me? I just want to say thank you and your team for pouring into all of this data. I know it's, it's very time-consuming and tedious, and it drives a lot of what our teachers do. And I, and I can really appreciate how you celebrate all of the wins that we have, but also focus on areas of growth for the future. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
May I make a comment?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. So, so yeah, stay, stay right there. So one of the concerns I had when we, when we talked about this presentation is, is the comparison game, where you throw other systems up there and compare. One, because I don't want our, our principals to think that all we do is compare us to, to other systems. And my, and my fear in that is not that I'm worried about competition. I love competition. But when you see us at the top in many categories, I don't ever want anybody to think that that's satisfactory. And, and I know our team doesn't get that, but I want to say that publicly to the board as well. Because when you look at, even, even where we have the American history, of course, the history teacher in me is most annoyed with that, with that number. But, but I, I know when you pull the AP and the IB and everybody out, that still means 60% of our students are left, and only 55% of them hit proficiency. So I, I just want to make sure that we continue, again, with the whole theme of not, not ever becoming complacent, that for those 50, those 60% left, we've got a, we, that number needs to be driven up. And you can look at that in, you know, in the other categories too. But I, I love the presentation. I love the competitive spirit. But just because we're ahead in these, and Amy, you know this, I'm just saying publicly what we've talked about privately, we can't ever, ever get comfortable just because our, our gold bar happens to be the first one. But thank you.
We agree.
I know.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the 2027-2028 student calendar with Mr. Dr. Josh Low.
Good evening. Yeah, this is, it's an annual highlight to the board presentations by, by all. So as you know, I know we have, have some, some new faces. We present this every fall, and it's always a couple of years out. And what that does is give our families time to plan ahead, as well as teachers and students and, and everyone else alike. So looking at 27-28 timeline and communication plan for the proposed calendar. Here's the initial scheduled timeline for this year's calendar. Obviously, provide initial draft to the L S C cabinet principals for input, the 2nd to the 9th, and then present that to you guys tonight. The plan will be, post the initial draft on the website tomorrow through the 24th, and that gives our community a couple of weeks to provide feedback on this. At the same time, I'll share, if you as board members have feedback, please let me know that directly. I'm happy to take that down and, and compile that into the, the feedback as well. But the, the thought there is that everyone in our community, teachers, staff, students, whomever, can provide feedback on the calendar. And then the plan will be to come back to you. Once we compile that, we kind of disaggregate it, look at what, if there are anything that, any of the suggested adjustments that are, that are something we need to try to incorporate, gives us a, a little window to do that. And if not, then we'll, obviously won't, but we'll come back and present the final version to you October 14th. And after it sits for a month, it would then plan to bring it to you for approval in November. I did share, or we taught earlier, the plan would be to, to do this by November. Last year, it took until December, so the hope would be doing this would actually allow us to get it approved November 18th by following this timeline. And that would give our families and, and staff a little more time instead of doing it as latest as it may have been done last year.
Have, have you received the feedback from the local school council or cabinet and school principals yet? Or you just gave it to them?
We gave it to them for feedback, and, and it's some given to them for the opportunity to give feedback. But I have not gotten all that back to look at it yet, no. Yeah, today's the 9th, yep. Yeah, so we'll post it tomorrow. A couple reminders before we look ahead, just considerations for the calendar each and every year. We must always have 178 student days, must have 190 teacher days. We try to balance those between first and second semester, and I can tell you that's rarely, if ever, completely even. Try to keep it within seven to eight days, just to keep the balance in terms of pacing guides and instruction and things like that. Also, the second semester many times may have a few extra days, but that's also when you get into test season and things like that in the spring. So a little, little cushion there for those things. We work each year in our community not to start school before August 1st and to be completed by the Memorial Day weekend. And that's kind of become the norm in our community for kind of what teachers and parents and, and others are, are kind of used to. Always work to protect fall, Thanksgiving, and spring breaks, which are, I think, good for, not, not just for students and staff, but, you know, it gives families a chance to have time away and, and also gives kids a chance to unplug, as well as teachers and staff, and kind of refresh themselves there every so often. And then before we look ahead, I will say that many times we'll feedback for community members or others, if they're providing feedback, they, you know, I could, I know last year was my first year doing this, they will be, why don't we move this day here? Why don't we not have that day? Well, if you do that, you got to put it somewhere else, which turns into more pre-planning or, or different length of weeks for things like that on another window. So just keep that in mind. If a day's moved, it has to be built back in to hit that 178 or that 190 of total days. With that said, you can see the calendar, and I know Ms. Mayo provided you all a paper copy as well. But the proposed calendar would begin school, or pardon me, would begin pre-planning the 27th. And you can see that's seven days pre-planning, which is actually one less than we had this current school year. It does, it is proposed to start school on the 5th of August, which is a Tuesday, pardon me, a Thursday start. I know our community prefers that much over Thursday, Tuesday starts, as, as I know we've had to have this past time around. But a Thursday start, it does build in fall break, Thanksgiving break, of course, two full weeks of the holidays there around, around Christmas and, and December before we come back. And it also protects spring break and, and wraps up post-planning prior to Memorial Day. And that's, that's the, the proposal at this time.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Because I don't have my glasses on.
Sure.
Um, I noticed that this staff holidays and the online learning days are like similarly gold.
Yes.
Can you tell me which ones are the online? Because it looks like there's less, but they just?
Yeah, and, and I will say that was an attempt this year by, by our team and Ms. Baldwin's first attempt to make this kind of have Forsyth colors. In, in the past, it would, had some fluorescent and things like that. But, yeah, we may need to tweak that a little bit, because I agree with you, it's, that's a little difficult to see. But it looks like online learning, staff development days, looking at October 15th, looking ahead at, I'm, I'm sorry, Tricia, I'm looking here too. March 17th, and that's it. So one each semester.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. And this allows us to start school the 5th, which is in range of essentially every year, going back to 15 minus the pandemic year. And then once again, there's our proposed timeline. And anybody have any questions or thoughts?
I'll just say, I think it's, I know in years, sometimes it's hard, but I think having post-planning be where our staff is done before the Memorial Day weekend. I know I've heard of that from a lot of folks going around talking to staff. So I think that, and then I think more, this year, correct me if I'm wrong, we had more pre-planning days this year than we've really ever had. And I've talked to several principals, and it seems like overall, it was, people were kind of unsure how it was going to work out, but it seemed like it's been a pretty positive feedback on the link, the number of days in pre-planning. So I mean, I'd love to hear what you all have.
Yeah, I think that, that typically it's in range, and this year, there was an extra day. You know, you, working within the parameters of, of August 1st to Memorial Day, sometimes it's a little wonky, so to speak, use a good professional word there. With that said, this, this 27-28 just happened to fall really pretty, I would say, pretty easy compared to what our community's used to, compared to how this current school year started with some days being different places. It required an earlier start, which did create the additional pre-planning days to get it worked into the, the timeframe that we look at.
All right. Dr. Young, you got something to say?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just going to be quiet and smile.
Yeah, I did not create this year's calendar in my current role.
Hey, there it is.
Doc, Dr. Josh Low, you did an outstanding job, first time taking this on.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Josh. Did a great job.
Any other thoughts or, or questions?
Nope, we're good. Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
All right, the next item on the agenda is with Mr. Derek Hershey, the review of policy G A C, staff involvement and decision-making. And then the next one, review of policy G A D, professional learning opportunities.
It's exhilarating, I know. We're doing G A C first, is that correct? So again, with all of our personnel policies, we're reviewing with our staff attorneys. And so for the staff involvement and decision-making, this last one, the last review date of this, you'll see was 2006. It's been a long time. This policy is very, very rarely used within the school districts in Georgia. There's only four across the state that have this. But because we have our local school council information, our board attorney and I both agreed, we need to leave this because we, we want to make sure we keep our staff involved. The only changes that they recommended making is to put the superintendent, in terms of being authorized to establish committees necessary to recommend policies and rules for proper functionings. And I think with that, you think through some of your advisory type of committees that I think are very important. So with that being said, these are the changes that are being recommended. Any questions?
Any questions? Nope. All right, next one.
Next one is policy G A D. And I actually reviewed this one in 2024. The reason we, we reviewed this 2024 because the federal government defined for us the difference between stipend and supplement. And so you could see below, stipend procedures were very clearly laid out. And so we did that the last time we reviewed this. The only recommendations for this one concerning professional learning opportunities in collaboration with the T N L department, we agreed that we wanted to include something in this because it's just about professional learning opportunities. We wanted to make sure that we included something about our, our leaders continuing having a commitment to their own professional learning, and then also to be able to continue to do this annually. So it's not just left alone for five years. And so those were the two recommendations that were made for change. Any questions there?
No.
No questions? All right, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Hershey.
Very welcome.
Any future items discussed on the agenda? Nope. All right. Do we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
Make a motion to go to executive session?
For personnel?
For personnel.
Thank you. So that's a motion by Mrs. Hoyes, second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Motion passes. We're in an executive session. Thanks for.
Guys, have a great evening.